I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and just for all.
Go ahead and call our meeting to order. Start off with our roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
And then the Lowery?
Here.
Jeff Upton there. Jan Throgmorden. Abbot John Collins?
Here.
Kira Hunga?
Here.
Don Rolland?
Here.
Jill Toward?
Here.
City attorneys present. So before we approve our agenda, I would like to amend the agenda to add item six to new business discussion and a phone contract for the new city works building. If anyone's okay with that, if you have any motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion. On second.
Motion second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Next, an approval of the meeting minutes from November 14th. Are there any adjustments that need to be made there? Can I make a little motion there in a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Alright, so next is our public forum where we allow, if anyone has anything they want to address the council with, we will limit you to two minutes discussion, but you're more than welcome to come, address us. We won't take any action on the public comment section of the meeting, but you're more than welcome to come, tell the city how good a job they're doing in their various departments if you'd like. If you have a complaint, Christie will see you after the meeting.
Jennifer Sims for the Economic Development Beautification Committee. Alright, so I wanted to thank the city staff who put up all these festive, fun little lights all through West Fork, and I'm excited to say that our Small Town Big Lights contest has six entries which way exceeded my expectations, so I'm super excited about that. And the registration ends on Monday. I have extra flyers if you have anywhere you'd like to post those, and so we're excited about that. The rock sign is still in progress, and Isaac Ogul has donated his time to a landscaping plan that we hope that we can get that engraved or that we can get the plan done by the end of the year. We have submitted our Tree City certification, so I think this will be the third year that we have the Tree City. And the dates for the Economic Development Beautification Committee for 2018 are set, and the next meeting is January the 16th, so it'll again meet on the third Tuesday of every month, so. Thank you.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you, Jennifer. Would anyone else like to address the council? Okay, close the public forum, move into our business reports. And I don't see Scott Oliver with the planning commission report. He may show up a little bit late. You have a... somewhere? Where is it? Yeah, there it is. Do you have the meeting minutes from the planning commission? It looks like they approved several of their past meeting minutes at this last meeting, and are starting to get serious on some discussion about updating their manuals. So I hope to see good things coming from that. We also have two applicants for the Parks Commission, which is down two, so I would like to appoint Mike Parks and Travis Keys to the planning commission. Mike is here, Travis is out of town tonight. Y'all make that motion. Motion second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Any questions about the planning commission before we move on? I am going to give them some guidance on our, what is it, conditional use permit, to try to take a little bit of the subjectivity out of that. I'm not dictating what they do, I'm just, I have an example of something I would like to see on that. I'm going to give it to them to look at, to work over, and come up with something to bring back to the council.
One of my New Year's resolutions, I never keep them, but I'm, is to try to help out with some of the commissions and shop, and that is one of them because we were, that was a, the whole, the whole ordeal with that last permit was, we need to help them out and support them and know what's going on, because that was pretty emotional and I don't want to go through that again.
And we're getting ready to see more of it.
Yeah.
There are some people looking at buying some of the property in town, and so there's going to be some rezoning requests coming to us in the near future. Up next, the library report. John?
This is just my voice here, okay. Not necessarily part of our report, but just wanted to mention the passing of a real friend of the library, just a local legend, I think, Roy Reed, passed over the weekend. His wife was, actually worked for the library for a while, and they're real supporters and friends of the library. Well, he was 87, had an illustrious career in journalism, and he did a program last summer when we presented the movie Selma, and he helped, he appeared and answered questions, and I don't know if you know, but that movie Selma, one of the characters is based on Roy Reed, and so he talked about the movie. Anyway, we just, we're going to really miss him, and he was, we've got several of his books at the library, and I want to remember Roy, because he's just a great guy, and remember Norma as well, his wife, who I think has plenty of support at this time. We have our silent auction going right now. It's going to end Friday at noon, and we appreciate all the people who have donated gift baskets for the silent auction, including a couple of local businesses, Noddy's Place here next door, and Boy Not Cafe, and then a lot of individuals who have donated baskets that are being bidded on until Friday at noon, and that should be a real successful fundraiser for us. And then otherwise, we have our knitting club, book club, ongoing, and otherwise, business as usual. And we do, we would like to present to Mayor Cottle a recommendation for the board, and that is, the board would recommend Paula Cottle to be, to fill up the full capacity, minimum capacity of our board of five. Right now, we're at four, so we would like to recommend Paula Cottle for your consideration.
She's moving from the Friends of the Library, right? Is she currently Friends of the Library?
She's both.
Yeah, she's a, I think she's a-
She's the vice president of the Friends, and she should be the board of the-
The board.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've talked to her, and she's willing to do it, which we're very happy. I think she's got an incredible amount of wisdom and experience, obviously, and hopefully she would help us move forward. So, that's, I thought we might be able to get that done during our report, so. But that's it. Any questions otherwise?
Thank you, John. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. So we have a motion, second, to appoint Paula to the library board. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Paulette, will you step up there? Will you go ahead and hit that power button to turn that off? I think that's where all the noise is coming from, on the front.
What red light? That red light?
Thank you.
I'm electronically challenged, along with IT work. I don't do that either. Our numbers are up this month from over the last year, so everything's looking good. We're doing a few more collections, but we have a few more police officers working too, so that always helps to our benefit. I had something happen this month that I don't think has happened, if ever. Christie came to my office and said, "You've got money to spend." I bought some new computers and some new monitors, and the monitors are already here. We've got those up and going, and computers will probably be installed before the end of the year. Hopefully, they'll do that while I'm on vacation, and I won't be in the way. I sent Vicki to school last month. Had our, we have three meetings a year. In the spring, we do the judges and clerks meetings. In August, I go to a chief's clerk's meeting, and in November, there's another clerk's meeting for our district. So I sent Vicki to that, and she got six and a half hours of continuing ed. It takes her three years to get certification to be a certified court clerk, and 30 hours of continuing ed, so she's working toward that, and in the spring of 2019, she will get her certification. But that's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me? I didn't think so.
Thank you, Paula. Chief?
Alright, we had 376 calls for service, 18 reports taken, 113 citations, 11 juvenile citations, which would have been in the school, 36 arrests, five felony, and 11 misdemeanors. On our training, Officer Underwood has kind of struck up friendship with the public information officer for the FBI, so he's been down there, well, he's going down there several times to do some job shadowing with her. He also finished up his basic one and two in criminal investigation. On our community, Officer Langston assisted the Farmington Police Department with their drunk driving class, and we also did shop with the cop. We got 20, just over 2,400 in donations, and it says 17 here, but we took 21 kids to the shop with the cop. Anything else, I think?
Did that get everybody on the list?
That got everybody on our list, plus with, what, I think Washington County took 22, so there was nobody left off.
I could be worried about that.
Nobody at all. 21, 21. Yeah, I had to change that. And we also have, I want to mention, it's not Vidra Palmer now, what is it?
Esselton.
Esselton?
Esselton.
She has, she's got an office here now. She works with Arkansas State Crimes Kids Children, so she's now in our building and will be assisting us with some of those type of calls. So any questions? I know we had some ramblings about the school zone down here. That was put in, I believe, two years ago, when scanning was here. It's been there. We stopped people for about a month, just to warn them and tell them that it was there. I guess we didn't warn everybody, but we have been, we've been enforcing that for a long time.
Thought that it's an excuse, but I still say this should match.
Well, you might be right, but that's-
Because it's still an excuse for anybody.
We don't put up the signs, we just enforce them, so.
Without paying attention to them?
Right. You'll miss it, though.
And I think some of that would fall on this council. If we want those signs changed, that should probably be something we take up here, talk to Isaac about when he comes up, and that's how that should move forward if the council deems that an issue. They're wondering what we're talking about. So our speed limit signs for the school zones are different on the state highway than they are on our city street on McKnight, about five miles an hour. And so someone was pulled over for-
For 36.
In a 30?
In a 20.
Well, what is it outside of school?
25.
So it's 25, regular speed limit, they were doing 36. We pulled them over, told them it was a school zone, it was 20, which caused some back and forth on Facebook. The general, I guess, concern was why are our two speed limits different in our school speed limits? And a lot of that is, one is a state highway, one is a city highway. Well, and the buses pull out over here, where they don't pull out, they pull in over here, but it is five miles difference, so.
But they were still 11 over.
They were speeding with it. That was not included in the Facebook post, by the way. Well, and what else wasn't included in the Facebook post is I don't think they were wrote for a school zone.
They weren't wrote for a school zone, and they were wrote 25 and a 36, and not the 20 and 36. They said they didn't know, so he gave them a break, wrote the 25.
I just, I can think of a case-
The signs, I see it every day. Just watching the sign.
Well, we catch a lot of flack in the city, especially our police department, but I promise you, almost without fail, if you come and talk to the police department or whatever department, our city has, if anywhere, they have erred on trying to be nice or been the rules in someone's favor, so. John, you also have here that we are officially 24/7 now.
Yes, we are 24-hour coverage now. We're doing the, the guys have picked up, they've started doing 12-hour shifts, so. They seem to be liking it, or they like the days off, and we're rolling with that.
Any other questions for John? Thank you. Isaac?
Just got a couple things. Good news is, I found out today, the Woolson Bridge will be open next week. They'll have a ribbon cutting or something down there with the county. The main thing we worked on this week was getting our criteria together for our, to how to spend our paving budget that y'all approved. We put some criteria together, got all the gravel streets that we have in town, sat down and talked through it, based it on number of people served and length, and it had several, several things. We narrowed it down to two streets we're going to try to do. We're going to try to partially pave part of James Street, James Place, it's James Place or James Street, just in front of the lots that it serves, and we're going to try to do the tail end of ceding that's still gravel. That's the ones we've settled on for 2018. Other than that, that was our main focus with this month's meeting. Water loss was down. It'll go back up next month. We had a leak, a couple leaks. I didn't talk to y'all last month. The telemetry that we put in at our pump station, our tank saved us about 200,000 gallons of water. I got a text message about 10:45 at night saying the tank was low, took off up there, found a leak just north of McKnight, so it ran for about 30 minutes where it would have run on that long until somebody sent it to me this morning. So it's working, and it's already paying for itself. That's about all I got, if y'all got any questions. My man Nick back there, he's going to update y'all. It's in the, it's in the new business down here. He's going to bring y'all up to speed.
So Isaac, the criteria for the, is it on the webpage or if someone, you know, because I got an email and I-
It's not on the, not on the webpage.
That there was going to be criteria. I didn't realize you had it in place.
Well, we kind of, it had to meet a width of 18 feet, which eliminates several of our gravel streets off the bat. Number of people served was the big one, potential growth area, how many, how many people it could serve in the future. I can't remember really.
I'll be sure and give them your name.
Yeah, just give my name.
So it is important to realize, though, for the first time, Isaac has sat down and has established criteria, so there is no more just on-a-while paving streets. There's criteria in place that his committee is using to determine who we are going to pay for.
Well, and I just want to make sure that, you know, as citizens, people know we're listening. We're listening, and we can't do everything at once, but this is the first time we've ever done anything like this.
There's like 18 or 20, I think there's 20 gravel streets. Some of them, like McKean Roberts, is going to be next time possible to pave. It's going to take some extensive road work. And some of them are, from here to the Opry Building over there, as long as they are, so. My goal is to get them all paved, if we can keep doing this from year to year, so. And we're continuing to get the state aid as well to help, help pay for that, but they have, they have a little more strict criteria. It has to meet a 22 feet and, so, but we have put in for that. We won't get it this year, it'll be for 19. And I'm hoping to do some more McKnight Street with it to fill up some of the potholes that we've got just south of town here. Anything else?
Sidewalks down McKnight look better.
Look a lot better since the mailboxes are out of main. Yeah, we, I worked it out with the postmaster, and we moved them to the other side of the road, so. So yeah, it does look a lot better. We did get our, we did get approved for a grant, I don't know, for 181,000 to do some sidewalk around Robinson down there. I've been in contact with Nick. The mayor's signed some stuff this afternoon to get the ball rolling on that. I don't want to sit on our hands with that. I'd like to have that out to bid by summer, and McClellan, the guy with McClellan thinks that's a reasonable goal, so I'd hope to have that out by summer, have construction started. So we were, we were moving ahead on that.
And the idea there is a small piece on?
It'll finish Main Street from, from just this side of Jakes where it stops, on down to the bridge, and then go from the bridge all the way around to Carter Park. So it's a pretty good stretch of sidewalk there. Yeah, there's several kids walk that. If we can just figure out a way to get them across the bridge safely, that'd be-
I know, I wash my dog on that loop, and that bridge, who wouldn't even go across there. I ain't have a good ditch there and all, so. That's cool.
Yeah.
And Isaac, can you give us an update on the new city administration building?
Oh, they're rolling right along on it. They've got it studded up. I don't know, did he say the finish date this morning?
They're still working for February 9th.
February 9th.
And we have a schedule in your packet that shows the expected completion.
They've been working, yeah.
Yeah. I think he said the, the manure roofing was supposed to come sometime this week. They're going to start drywalling the outside walls. Our IT guys, I think tomorrow, he said tomorrow, we'll have to go up and help our IT guy do a little bit of pulling wire and stuff, but they're rolling right along with it. Plumbing's nearly done, HVAC's in there right now, so. They're hoping to have some heat in there in about a week, and then they can really, really start rolling. They can't mud and tape sheet rock with no heat, so. Yeah, they're rolling right along on it.
Any other questions for Isaac?
When do you think the other projects will start?
I have no clue. I don't even, where are they at in the, in the- Yeah, we're still in drawings.
So the next one, Misty, will be the library to start, and we should be having another meeting, I would think, relatively soon for that. We met, the architect went back to make some changes on the drawings, and we'll come back for another meeting to address some issues that we had, and from that point, we should be starting to see some plans for scheduling. But it'll be, I would, I would think by midsummer, by June, we'll have everything probably started, or getting close to starting. So he's indicated he'll have plans for each of the rest, or is he going to produce them one at a time? I think the library's going to come, and then hopefully we get more than, I hope the other two follow quickly thereafter. But we, to be honest, we don't know, and we're still, the, the original focus was to get the administration building, so they can't do anything here until administration is out, so that was the original focus. And I assume, my thoughts are, the others will come quickly once we get to the other building. Any other questions? Thanks, Isaac. Chad?
The Parks Committee wasn't able to meet in November, so I didn't have any minutes for your packet. It looked like we might not meet in December either, but we did squeak in a meeting yesterday, and a couple of projects that were discussed yesterday that I wanted to bring to y'all's attention are both for Carter Park. We discussed a flagpole at the complex, our sports complex, and our park does not have a flagpole. We discussed several options on where to put it and how big to put it, and we didn't, we haven't for sure decided where, but we did decide we wanted to go with a big, nice flagpole. We're looking at something, probably at least a 40-foot flagpole that'll hold possibly a big 8 by 12. We want, we want something, something big that's a focal point for the, for the flag there and for the facility. So we're working on that, working on getting pricing, on doing that, possibly getting the pole and put it in ourselves, or I'm also getting pricing for someone that'll get the pole and put it in. We're going to look at it both ways and see, but that facility, along with a few other facilities that the city owns, needs a flagpole, we feel, so. Working on that. Also, in doing that, we are researching pricing for a flagpole at the new city hall building also, so I'm getting prices there. It's going to be a smaller one, from what we've talked about, so. And then the other one is a walking trail, hard surface walking trail around Carter Park. The original plans called for that, but it was, for one, the placement of the fields. One particular field, Field 3, was built right up against the forest, the trees, and, and there's a bank goes off there, so we've decided, we got the trees cleared out, and Isaac's guys are using that as a place to bring in some field dirt and things, and we're trying to build that up. So once we get that done, then we will have the capability of putting that trail all the way around the park. So the next step is just figuring out how we're going to pay for it. So there are some grants out there we're going to apply for and work towards getting those, and some of it can come out of the parks budget, out of our capital alley or something, but we hope, hopefully that's something we'll get done this season, this year. The flagpole, we hope to have a place in the next couple of months, well, before our busy part of the year starts for the park down there. But the trail, don't really have a timeframe, but would love to see it. And that'll help, you know, we get that sidewalk connecting the two, and we have a more walking trail, and people, when Riverside gets so busy down there, allow a place for people to go and walk with it. It's not quite as busy, so pretty excited about that. So, and then on the sign, I didn't want to bring it up on the rock sign, because I keep telling y'all it's, but it's going to get done. I want you to keep in mind that the labor itself is being donated, so it's really the cost of materials for the stencil and things like that of doing it, so that's one reason that it's, I haven't pushed the guys much, but he's aware that he's to be done before the end of the year, so he can get paid before the end of the year, so it can go on, because the money is budgeted for this year, so. As soon as he can get that done, I'll get it sealed up, and then the committee is going to take over and do the landscaping and the lighting, things like that, so. So, that's about it.
Any questions for Chad? Thank you, sir. Chief Myers?
Well, other than, been a lot of confusion. People say they don't know. They tell us that every day. The county is under burn ban, so, you know, watch the news every now and then. Christmas party, we had it, went great, even considering we didn't have our head planner there, because she was disabled, but everything went great. Had a few personnel issues on the volunteer side we've dealt with. Other than that, I don't have anything, unless you guys have some questions. The granting contract, you guys did later. It's not, no changes any whatsoever. Brandon, the city council approved everything last night, signed off on it. All that's all that we need tonight is just approval and signatures, so. No changes at all.
Do you have an update on Jen?
All I've heard, all I've heard is, don't go see her right now, because Mike's having a hard enough time keeping her down as it is. Anybody that shows up, she wants to get up and do something, so. That was the thing I wanted to go see today, but Travis said, no, we're not allowed to go up there right now.
So tell everyone what happened to Jen.
She tripped over Katie last Thanksgiving, and broke her elbow, and what they say is the absolute worst possible spot in the world you can break your elbow. Had to do pretty good little surgeries. I think six months, I think, is like the rehab time for this. Ridiculous. the rehab time for this. Ridiculous. Did re-injure the knee that she just had surgery on. So, she's gonna be down.
Broke her kneecap. And they told her yesterday at the doctor that she would be in her splint for at least another six weeks.
Really? Wow.
That she couldn't mend it for at least another six weeks.
Y'all know she's not the kind of lady that wants to sit around and do nothing. Mike's having a really, really tough time.
Started, uh, therapy.
And they say it's gonna be extensive, long, drawn-out process. Long, drawn-out. So, hopefully she'll get back soon. Hopefully. That's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Myers?
Thank you.
All right, Kristy.
Um, I really don't have a whole lot on the finances besides what's there. And you guys can see that. Um, he did have one question, just so that in case you guys saw it, I'll, um, explain what that is. On the street budget, um, on the paving, there's a, actually a credit, uh, in the expense line item for still paving. And that was a reimbursement that we got for part of McKnight Street sidewalk. Um, we're, we're gonna be putting in another disbursement request for that, um, this week. So, we'll actually be getting another sixty-three thousand reimbursed to us. Um, probably won't come till next year, but that'll just help, uh, because we paid the sixty-three today, um, and are still in budget for the year for the street department. Um, so when we get that money back next year, it'll be just that much more that we can put back to sidewalks, um, for next year's budget. Um, and then just on the overall, um, finances for the city for the year, um, I thought it was exciting to see that we're about four hundred and eight thousand dollars income over expense for the year. Um, by far the best year that I've seen so far since I've been doing, in this position. So, any questions?
So, while we're on that topic, just a heads up, um, next meeting, we'll probably have a budget review, just to go over the final, uh, final numbers, uh, we pick on department heads that, that we decide to. But, yeah, uh, next meeting, we'll, we'll review the budget in a little bit more detail. Any other questions for Kristy? All right. So, let's move into our old business. Nick, we'll get you up out of here in just a minute, okay? So, last month, we had a proposal to change how we vote in the city for the city council, uh, from voting at large to voting by ward. Kristy has sent out some information, uh, that she put together on that. Um, you notice that there's, there's two cities close to us that, that do vote by ward. Uh, one is Fayetteville, one is Huntsville. I did not bother calling Fayetteville. Um, they're a big city. They have their reasons for voting by ward. But I did call Huntsville. Um, Huntsville knew they voted by ward. They didn't know why or when they started. Um, that's just how they've always done it. So, I called the Madison County, uh, courthouse and talked to them about it. And they were pretty much the same, uh, understanding. Yes, we vote by ward. We don't know why. That's just how we do it. They pretty much thought everybody did. So, that's the only small town up close to us that does vote by ward. There are some studies, I don't know if you guys researched this at all, but there's some studies out there about Little Rock switching to voting by ward back in, I believe it was the fifties. The main reason was they felt like it was a disproportionately white representation on their council, uh, for a city that had several minorities. Um, and, and it mostly, mostly focused on race minorities. So, this study was, was done on that, and, and Little Rock went to ward voting, and then they changed it. Now, they're a hybrid where they have some wards that are voted on by ward, and then they have some people that are voted on at large. The, the finding of this study that's out there shows that, that yes, it did help with representation on the council, uh, when looking at race. The study did not find that it helped with anything else. And when we look at West Fork, and we think about diversity, we unfortunately don't have a lot of race diversity. But our council, I think if we look, if we look around, we have, uh, we have a good mix of, of gender, um, you know. And I, I think, I don't think we stand to gain a lot by, um, trying to gain better diversity on our council, given our population. But we do have this. It was proposed last month. Uh, I wanted everyone to kinda, it got a little heated. So, I wanted everyone to have time to, to step back and think about it, look into it. But we do need to do something with it. So, um, if you guys want to discuss it, let's discuss it. If not...
I'll make a motion, let's vote.
Can we have a motion that's a little bit more specific?
I can make a motion, leave it like it is.
Yeah, you're right.
We're, we're gonna do that, yes.
Yeah. Leave it like it is. Vote.
You're making a motion to, to continue holding our elections at large?
Yes.
For our council members?
Yes.
I'll say. So, we have a motion and second. Is there any discussion before we take a vote?
I would like to say it seemed like a solution in search of a problem.
Okay?
It's a bigger city. It'd be different. But I'm worried it's not big enough for that.
Any other discussion on this?
What was the motion again? To leave it like it is?
Yes.
To impose anyone?
Okay.
I don't like that phrase.
Backwards?
You don't, yes.
Yeah.
Are you doing that?
I'll try to do a better job.
At the last meeting, you kinda did, or two meetings ago, you kinda did a backwards one.
So, we have a motion and second.
Still bothering you.
She's still confused. Are you still confused?
We have a motion and second. The motion is to leave our current election rules as they are. We will be continuing to vote at large for our council members. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We didn't need to do a roll call. I did. Think that was all right? All right, moving into our new business. Nick, is this where you come in?
Yes, sir. Well, the sewer rehab construction is done, finally. Uh, in November, we did a final inspection with the state. They came up and, uh, got all their close-up paperwork done and got their final payment submitted to the state, and they're processing it right now. So, we can close the door on that phase. Um, we do have, um, in February, we'll do a walkthrough and see if there's any items that need to be addressed by the contractor. And one thing that we've already gotten them to commit to doing is those inverted speed bumps on Northwood. I've got in writing from, from the contractor that they will come out in February and work with the city on addressing those, um, along with anything else that, that comes up. And then we'll have them come back out again in August at the one-year point when they were done with their, all the sewer installation, but not all the cleanup. Um, we'll bring them back out for one more, what we call project performance inspection and address any items there.
Will you have them address that? Is he gonna thicken, thicken it or cut it out and redo the base?
Um, you know, we've talked about, we've talked about a few options.
They're gonna cut it.
They're probably...
They're gonna cut it and do a concrete, a concrete patch.
Teabash?
Yeah.
Pretty much. It's, you know, you'll see the cut, but they're gonna try to get it to match color as best as possible, that it's, it'll hold up. We're afraid if we try to put asphalt back there, it'll just get pushed back down again. So, we'll have it, you know, a year, a couple of years later, we'll have those inverted bumps again. So, we'll, we want those to go away. So, so that phase is, is closed out. We're, um, currently we've got the sewer mon, sewer flow monitors installed. We put those in in early October. Uh, so we're about two months in. We've got just under a month left. And, um, I think we're all doing our rain dance right now, trying to get rain, because as luck would have it, Murphy's Law, we put the monitors in and it quits raining. So, we got a, we got a little rain in October, um, that did, we did get some readings on that. And I talked to the subconsultant that we're using today about it. And he said that, um, we'll take a look at it at the end of the month and see if there's enough there to analyze. If not, then we'll, we'll, we're gonna talk to, I've got a phone call into Alan Johnson at ANRC to talk to him about that scenario. If we get to the ninety days and we, we've really just got one measurable rainfall event, do we process the data and see if it's acceptable? Or do we go into wait-and-see mode, see if we can get another storm or something to, to get good data? So...
My rain dances work.
Do they?
My water's been dry and it's good for one end, but bad for one community.
It's great for, it's great for construction to finish things up, but, but for what we need right now, it's not good. But, um, but we do have some data. And we'll, here in the next couple of weeks, we'll hope for a little bit more and then move forward from there. Um, as far as the connection to Fayetteville, um, the next phase, we're working with ANRC right now in the next bond package. They're starting to ask for information like approximate treatment costs that Fayetteville will charge, what the annual operating budget will be for the city, for the sewer side. So, they're, they're plugging numbers in and trying to figure out how that's gonna, everything's gonna factor in. So, we're getting close there. Um, Isaac and I are meeting with the city's utility director tomorrow in Fayetteville to go over the contract between the two cities. I think we've, on our end and city owners helped as well, we've, we've, we feel like we've addressed everything, and we're gonna pass it to them for their review. And hopefully can call that done here pretty soon, because we've been kicking that around for a couple of years. And, um, other than that, we're just waiting for the rain. And we're actually, we're starting to move forward on, on our side, preparing easements, easement documents for the portion of the properties that are located in West Fork, because probably early next year, we'll start looking at trying to acquire some of those easements ahead of time, so we can get a little bit of a head start. But, you know, any questions?
No?
All right. Thank you.
And then Nick, while you're there, are you gonna talk about this change order?
Oh, yeah.
Was that, was that part of you?
Yeah, I guess it was. I didn't even see that. Um, the change order, we did have to process a final, what they call reconciliatory change order, which basically they gotta, they take the original quantities and pay items and get it to the final quantities. And we did that adjustment. It was actually a deduction from the original, from the contract amount. It was about, was it fifty-one hundred dollars or so?
Mm-hmm.
A reduction. So, that's good. It came in under budget there. Um, so we've, we've got about, I think, twenty, twenty-one thousand left in that, that loan right now, which some of that's allocated to pay the remaining of the monitoring. And we have a little bit left there that could get rolled into the, uh, next bond. But, uh, but yeah, that change order was one of those good ones that actually decreased the price. So, we're gonna get it done, done under the final price there.
Can we take a vote on that?
Yes.
Probably.
Okay.
You can do it all in favor if you'd like.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the change order to reduce the contract by five thousand dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Go second.
So, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Yes, sir?
I'll make a side note to that. Uh, the ANRC, our next bond will go before them, I think, January seventeenth, the eight million dollar bond. So, so we should know what, what kind of forgiveness we're gonna get after the, after January seventeenth. We should know what our total, total cost will be for, for our end.
Anything else for Nick?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So, does anyone in here have a hard candy or a cough drop?
I've got a cough drop.
So, I don't have to hag the rest of the...
They have enough to handle there.
Yeah. Everyone's tired of hearing them. All right. So, up next, uh, under new business, the approval of the budget summary and lowest bidder from Baldwin Shell. So, what we're doing here is getting council approval on our contracts for the city administration building. So that everything looks good for the auditor. You guys have a breakdown of those contracts, or the prices on those contracts? And John Collins, if you'll notice, did win the roofing contract.
I noticed.
He is assured as that's not a conflict of interest.
Don't come looking for me.
So, that is, that is not the same John Collins who sits on our council.
He's scared, Tom.
He's really good. It's quick.
Are there any questions about that? So, would someone make a motion to approve those contracts?
I'll make a motion.
Motion in second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is our fire agreement with the city of Greenland. Are there any questions or comment on that before we move forward?
Pretty good and dry.
So, there's some talk that Greenland may grow, and they may get a hotel and stuff. But we do have a clause in there that if it's something we can't handle, we can renegotiate the contract. So, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve renewing the contract?
I'll second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is our resolution to, uh, continue in our agreement with the Rural Fire Association. Are there any questions concerning this contract? Would someone here make a motion regarding it?
I'll make a motion that we passed Resolution twenty seventeen dash ten.
In second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item five of new business is the water department's policy for shut offs and adjustments. Does everyone take the time to read that? Any questions or concerns with it? So, Isaac, I do have one question on this. Um, at the bottom of it, it reads, "The customer will be charged the average water charge." This is, this is for a waiver, an adjustment. They'll be charged the average water charge, the cost that we paid at the city of Fayetteville, and all sewer charges. Is that, the sewer charges based on their average rate, or is that the sewer charges based on total water usage?
Total water, correct.
Well, that's what we have been doing.
Yeah.
And so, so say I have a leak at my house. I run an extra thousand gallons out. Actually, let's say it's a leak. I run an extra twenty thousand out. We're gonna write off, uh, we're gonna look at my average bill. We're gonna charge me that. We're gonna charge me the cost that, that the city pays Fayetteville. And then we're also gonna charge me for the sewer on my normal usage plus the twenty thousand gallon leak.
Yeah. So, it's, you'll pay your average bill, and then I think we pay Fayetteville four and a half dollars per thousand. So, you'll be billed like that, plus sewer.
We'd have to do it that way, but that is how we're doing it right now.
I just wanted to bring it up, but...
We, we had a gentleman that had a big leak, and, and he lost quite a bit of water. His bill went from like nine hundred dollars down to, down to five hundred dollars, I believe, by doing it that way. Still, it's, you're still paying a lot for your, for your leak, but...
You are. And, and my, my, my thought is, someone could make the argument, "That water was leaked. You did not treat it at the sewer facility." I'm not saying we need to change anything. I'm just saying that's, if I'm playing devil's advocate with the policy, that's, that would be, uh, the route.
It could also be a toilet running full bore and running up... His bill went from like $900 down to, down around $500, I believe, by doing it that way. Still, it's, you're still paying a lot for your, for your leak, but...
You are, and, and my, my, my thought is someone could make the argument, that water was leaked, you did not treat it at the sewer facility. I'm not saying we need to change anything, I'm just saying that's, if I'm playing devil's advocate with the policy, that's, that would be the route.
It could also be a toilet running full bore and running down the sewer as well, so...
Okay.
Well, that being said, is there, is there a way to make an adjustment if you know that's the case or if you know that they blocked that out in the yard?
To adjust the sewer?
Yes.
Man, I guess we probably could.
Well, I mean, I know even Fayetteville... I mean, that, that sounds reasonable to me, if, if you know for sure that it didn't run down...
It's a yard leak.
Yeah. But if you know for sure that their toilet was running, or you, or they, they didn't go out in the yard and dig anything up, but all of a sudden, all of a sudden their water bill's not high again, well, then you know that they had something in the house.
Typically, typically, we don't get just astronomical high water bills, they're, they're just a little bit high. You know, it'll jump a hundred dollars. It's not quite like that gentleman who, who had nearly a thousand dollar water bill.
Right, if you're, if you're...
When you do the adjustment, it, it, it comes back down pretty close to...
If you're adjusting the sewer off of a thousand dollar water bill, that'll make quite a bit of difference.
Yes.
And if, I mean, that, to me...
In that case, he had two, he had two leaks, one running down the sewer and one in his yard, so, so it's been...
You do half and half, you split it in half? Maybe, that'd be hard to, to put that kind of...
Well, I guess it would be, but, I mean, you know, to me, I understand, we don't wanna eat the cost of paying Fayetteville for sewer, but you also don't wanna charge somebody an astronomical amount of money, you know, they're already paying a bunch for the water.
Yeah, and then pay a...
Right, but we also have to look at it, and, and I opened this can of worms, so... But we do have to look at it from this standpoint, too. From, from the meter to my house is my responsibility. I mean, that, ultimately, that falls on me, the homeowner, so we have to look at it from that viewpoint, too.
Which you don't own until it's too late if it don't surface.
That's right.
Well, one of the things the city is trying to do is waive a replacement meter, meters to help, and eventually, we will have an early warning system. A few of us already have it, there have been test orders put in around town, but, you know, I think by monitoring your, your bill, most, how many incidents, like the gentleman that lost a thousand gallons, what's the average? You said it was fairly mundane or fairly low?
Yeah, I mean, some people's, the, the normal leak, their, their bill will double. You know, it'll be a hundred dollar water bill and it'll be $200. In this case, the gentleman had knee surgery and wasn't at home and his ran for days and days and days, and he ended up with, I, I can't even remember, it's 25,000 gallons of water or something that, that ran through his meter.
But he's a significant exception, not the rule, that's pure far between.
Yeah. Most of ours are, most of ours will be a toilet that'll run for months and months and months, and they come in here wanting an adjustment, 'cause they've got a leak all the time, so... And they'll, they'll call and say, "Well, my bill's doubled." "Well, have you got your toilet fixed?" And they'll...
And so, I, I think maybe I should, and maybe I should have explained that better, this is what we've currently been using, we just haven't had it written. And I think we, we probably suffer from, from that very thing. The citizen's coming in, "My bill's high, why?" And it's, it's something on their end that's progressively happening and it's...
I think it would be difficult to make it situational, case by case basis.
Obviously.
You would be better served just to make it a policy, not, you know, to gouge anybody or not to turn into a, sorry, those are the breaks community, but that is part of the joy of homeownership. So I, it's just an opinion, but I, I think we're, we're well-served by what we're doing now.
Any other discussion?
I don't know, nothing, thought it up. It's so hard to charge the customer if they didn't use it.
Technically, they did use it, because it's on their side of the meter.
Well, not if it's out, because...
You're talking about the sewer.
The sewer part of it is what we're talking about.
Well, what you're really talking about is allocation of resources after someone comes in and makes a complaint. Are you gonna go to their house and, and find out who it, how, what, what the issue is? Is Jerry, is...
Typically, they'll, they'll call and say, "My bill is high." Well, we send a guy out to check the meter, to see if your town tells them, "Yes, your bill's high, you've got a leak somewhere on your side." So we, we do have, although it'd be minimal, we do have some man-hours tied up in going out and checking this meter and, and determining whether they got a leak.
So it's not just a cold shoulder, you'll...
Yeah.
You'll check to determine. Oh, I, I bought an old, old house on Maple Street and the plumbing has been a joy several times. That's part of, even if you have rental property, that's part of, part and parcel of the property. And it, I think it would be different if we had several large problems, or if there was an issue with maybe a big commercial customer, but we're really not talking about that. And we can always revisit it, I guess, if we are.
Any other questions, discussion? Someone be willing to make a motion on this, on this nest?
I'll make a motion that we proceed in the fashion we've been using. Is that adequate wording?
That we accept the written policy. I'll say it. Motion, a second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And the last item under new business is our phone contract. Did everyone have an opportunity? Kristy got that out as soon as she could, do you? Any questions on that? Anyone don't understand, there's a lot of it to it. So the idea is, we're currently on just a regular phone system here. We're paying 1,100, almost 1,160 dollars a month for what we have. When we move to the, the new building, we're gonna have to have a phone system over there, we're still gonna have to have a phone system here. So what we're proposing is that we go to a voice-over IP, VoIP system, so it's internet phones, that will allow us to talk back and forth. Kristy can transfer a call from over there to the police department, vice versa. We, we, there are a lot of options with this new system. The, the scary thing about it is it's $30,000 for the equipment, and that's a lot of money. That's, we can pay that out over five years. We have a contract there with, to get financing for that through our vest. Our monthly bill will go down to roughly $300 a month, okay, for, for the phone service. What is, with the phone service and the, the financing, we'll be paying $850 a month. So even if we look at that, buying, purchasing this new equipment and the new phone bill, we're still saving a couple hundred dollars a month over what we're currently paying. The city is better served, we're moving more into the 21st century with our phone system and our capabilities at the city.
And you have new equipment.
And we have new equipment.
It's VoIP and it's a lot better.
It's nice stuff, isn't it? So how long is the estimated before you'd need to upgrade any equipment?
It's a lot of...
If you purchase this?
It's a good question.
What's the lifespan of the equipment?
We assume...
Yeah, yeah. iPhone comes out every year.
And, and while this is technology and it suffers from some of those same...
Advances, it's, it's not, it's not on par with, with the iPhone coming out and replacing current technology.
I will say I've built several schools with the VoIP equipment over 10 years ago and they're still using the same equipment.
Yeah, it's not something that comes, comes and goes every couple of years.
A lot of it's probably software updated anyways, instead of equipment updated.
It's been a system, like, 13 years ago.
Yeah, it's...
Does this include all the phones the city has, including like your cell phones at the...
No, it has nothing to do with cell phones.
Okay.
Just office phones. One of the, one of my favorite features of this I have at my office is if someone leaves me a, a voicemail, it will automatically transcribe that voicemail to my email. It's just, you can, it frees you up a lot, makes you a lot more accessible. The department has to really look for it, too.
I don't answer the phone with it. Like I said, I don't free you up a lot.
Any other questions about it? It's, it's a big commitment? It is. Honestly, it's cheaper, though, than the route that we're currently on.
Do we need to justify anything or...
We don't have $30,000 capital out there, budgeted.
I mean, I hate to bring that up, but I'm one of those, I'd rather pay for it and not have to finance it, but that's just me.
It's cheaper that way. Everything's on the table, I will say. We just approved our budget, this would be an amendment to that budget, that's gonna affect several departments. I'm not saying that we can't do it, I'm just saying that is it, are we going to save enough money to make that worthwhile?
Yeah, what, the amortization of, what's the finance charge on the system? I didn't read close enough to get that, I read through it.
It is...
I just don't remember what it was.
I saw it in there somewhere, Kristy.
Yeah, I did, too.
I want more shit.
I don't...
The cost is 30,000?
Mm-hmm, 30,000.
The total on our vest page is 33,227, it's almost like 3,227.
Plus tax.
What was the cost?
Yeah, there's tax in there, too, so, so 30,000 plus some tax, minus financing, so we're looking, we're looking at a couple thousand dollars for financing over five years.
I don't think you want to mess with a budget when you do it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, sometimes finance charges are not at the middle.
In a per, in a perfect world, we would have had this information prior to the budget.
It's fine, I just wanted that.
It seems to be pretty low-hanging fruit to me, the motion that we approve purchasing the new phone system.
And entering into, can we do all that in one motion?
Okay.
Is there any other discussion before we take a vote? Have a motion, a second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Kristy, do we need to do something with this disposal order of Jones?
No, it's all about the judge.
It's not about the judge, do we still need to go ahead?
It's equipment, isn't it?
It's evidence, it's evidence.
Equipment will be a misnomer.
So it's just informational purposes?
Equipment first, or...
So for mayor's comments, as I mentioned before, the January meeting, we will do a budget review, just to see how we ended the year. The budget is in really good shape, as Kristy mentioned earlier. Other than that, have a Merry Christmas, how would entertain a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.